Good afternoon. It's 4:30 PM on Tuesday, December 3, 2024. We will call the City Council Meeting of the City of New Ulm to order. At this time, our first item is the consent agenda. Counselors, what are your wishes?
I'll offer a motion to approve those.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 2.1, under licenses and permits, we have a tree service license.
I'll offer a motion to approve the issuance of tree service license for Mankato Land Shapes Incorporated, 60505, 216th Street, Eagle Lake, Minnesota, for the period beginning December 4, 2024, ending June 30, 2025. Subject compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Item 3.1 is an interim use permit for 914 Fifth North Street. Mr. Niceley.
All right. Good evening, Council President. Counselors, John Niceley, planner with the City of New Ulm. The item in front of you is for an interim use permit application by Holly and Justin Schaefer on behalf of Stephen and Jennifer Hesse to allow the operation of a bakery business on property located in the RT2 zoning district on property legally described as the rear half of Lot 14, Block 147, north of Center Street. All of us probably drive by that place and know it as the House of Nutrition property. The Planning Commission at its November 21, 2024, meeting unanimously recommended approval of the request with seven conditions. I'm going to give a brief overview of the process for an interim use permit. The reason being is we've only ever granted three of these for the city, so each one that comes in, it's kind of new, so it's good to keep updated on that. So an interim use permit may be allowed based on any of the following provisions followed in 2.4 of the zoning ordinance. One, to allow land use for a limited period of time that reasonably utilizes the property in a manner that is otherwise not consistent with the comprehensive plan nor permitted in the applicable zoning district. Two, to provide the city with a reasonable degree of discretion in determining the suitability of certain designated uses for specified zoning districts. Two, to allow a use that is presently acceptable but not permitted within the zoning district and with anticipated development may not be acceptable in the future. Then lastly, to allow a temporary use of the property until a particular date, until occurrence of a particular event or until zoning regulations no longer permit it. So when an interim use permit is approved or denied, that is specific to that request for that property. That's not broadly brushed across the whole city. So if you were to approve a bakery at this location in RT2 zoning district, that doesn't mean five weeks down the road in another RT2 zoning district that would be a permitted use. So the purpose of the RT2 zoning district is to provide for low-density 1-2-unit dwellings generally located in the grid development along with directly related complementary uses. The applicant is proposing to operate a bakery in retail space in an existing building on the first floor at 914 Fifth North Street. They would operate the bakery in the front two-thirds of the building. In that space, the applicant is planning on installing all of the kitchen equipment and space for baking along with the retail space for their baked goods. The rear third of the building would be used for storage of necessary items for the bakery. The retail space will consist of selling baked goods, including but not limited to bread, scones, cookies, and bars. And the retail space will generally be open Thursday and Friday from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and then 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Saturday and Sunday. At this time, there's no planned indoor seating for customers to eat their purchased items at this location. The applicant anticipates they will be making up to 150 loaves of bread daily, and the amount of additional baked goods is yet to be determined. The applicant has stated that the majority of their bakery items they produce will be delivered to customers off-site. They will be baking in the building up to five days a week, Wednesday through Sunday, generally from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. There is a gravel parking lot located on this property to the west of the building, and there's approximately four off-street parking stalls in that gravel parking space. The second floor of the building is an apartment, and we've been told that it's been renovated or updated in the last year, and the applicant's proposing to continue to use that upstairs as an apartment dwelling space. They are also requesting that the interim use permit be for a period of five years. That's the maximum we allow an interim use permit in the City of New Ulm. So just a little history we have here in your council agenda packet on what was used in that building. So Art Muirfield built that in 1946, and we didn't know when he ended that operation, but we do know that Abel's Electric moved in in 1959 and ran it until 1962. Then there was Miller's Upholstery from 1964 to 1967, Gary's Outboard Motors from 1970 to 1977, and then the House of Nutrition, and I stated this wrong at the Planning Commission, it actually was in there from 1978 to 2023. There are periods of time where it is unknown who occupied the building or if the building was empty. And lastly, at the Planning Commission, there was questions about where is going to be the offloading of goods that are going to be delivered to the bakery, such as flour and materials for baking. The applicant has contacted me and let me know that they will be, if, when they will be dropping off, it'll be in front of the building on Fifth North Street, because there was concern not only coming out and making that turn out of the alley, but also blocking potentially the neighbors' garage that's located in the alley. I've discussed unloading with the city engineer, and they felt that that wouldn't be a problem on Fifth North Street. I would just note to the applicant, if at all possible, try avoid drop-offs during those peak times, typically in the morning or around 3:00 in the afternoon when school be coming into session and letting out. So staff's evaluation of the Planning Commission. Staff believes that the application complies with the standards for granting an interim use permit. It's unknown how much traffic will be generated from the retail sales of the bakery goods at the site. There is a duration of time where the building has been vacant and no additional retail traffic has entered the site. If traffic and vehicles entering the property are a concern of the Planning Commission, staff will recommend screening of the parking lot to avoid vehicle headlights from shining into the neighboring properties. That would be to the north. Considering that the property has been commercial in nature since it was constructed in 1946, staff believes that the proposed use would meet the guidance set forth in the comprehensive plan, as it would not result in new development of commercial property in a residential neighborhood, rather again occupy an existing commercial space in a residential neighborhood. The granting of an interim use permit does not permanently grant the use of the property, rather it's for a specified period of time, and in this case, staff would support the maximum of five years. After five years, the permit can be renewed again, and issues that may arise can be addressed during that second renewal period. There are potential for odors being generated from the site from the baking process. We do not know if these smells will impact nearby neighbors. Baking will take place daily and consistently, which would generate likely more odor than what would be normally generated from a residence. The Planning Commission had seven recommendations for conditions. One is that you shall comply with the standards found in Section 2.4E of the zoning ordinance. Two, that the interim use permit approval is for a period of five years. Three, that the hours of operation for the baker will generally be from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Wednesday through Sunday, and the retail space will be open Thursday and Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and then 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Saturday and Sunday, and no activity shall take place after 9:00 PM each day. Four, customer parking will be encouraged to take place in the hard-surface location on the applicant's property. Five, the size of the use will not expand or be moved from the location identified in the application. Six, the applicant/owner will pay the cost to record the resolution and consent agreement approving the interim use permit with the Brown County Recorder's Office. Again, the interim use permit will not be valid until the consent agreement is signed and recorded. And then lastly, seven, if the property were to change ownership beyond Schaefer's or Hesse's, the interim use permit shall be null and void. If a new owner wishes to continue the use of the site as a bakery, they will be required to apply for a new interim use permit. We did have one letter from a neighbor, and that was included in your packet, and they were in support of bakery going into this location. Other than that, we haven't received any comments from the public on this application. That concludes the staff report.
John, remind me that there's a house on that property, too. Does that, do they use the same driveway, or do they have a different access point?
The house that is...
And it sits behind that.
Kind of...
North of the fence?
Yeah.
Parking lot?
North of the fence. Okay. So that, they enter through the back, through the alley.
Okay. So they, so this property has nothing to do with, that parking lot belongs to House of Nutrition?
Correct.
And how many parking spots do we have there?
Four.
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 And a lot of that bakery stuff, that's a 15, 10 to 15-minute stop and go typically. Okay. Thank you.
If none other counselors have any issues with it, I'll offer a resolution to approve with conditions, the interim use permit, application of Holly and Justin Schaefer on behalf of Stephen and Jennifer Hesse to allow the operation of a bakery business on property located in R2 zoning district on a property legally described as the rear half of Lot 14, Block 147, north of Center.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
I just think it's good use of the property, and, you know, it's always been, since it was born, I mean, built, a business of some nature, so.
I'd love waking up to a big bread every day.
What's that?
A couple of your cookies on my counter. I was just curious where you guys are doing things now. It's in your house. Okay. Okay. All right. Well, now you can say you have a space. Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
And President Becker.
Yes, that motion does carry.
Best of luck.
Yes, thank you. Item number 3.2 is a simple lot division for Lot 44, Block 77, north of Center Street. Mr. Schnoebrock?
Yeah. Madam President, members of the City Council, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this lot division with conditions at their November 21 meeting. The owner of the property is Leo and Carol Haas. The street address is 516 11th North Street. The property is located east of North Broadway and north of 11th North Street. Lot 14 is a standard gridiron lot, so it has dimensions of 50 by 165, and there are two houses located on the lot. The owner is proposing to split the lot in two equal halves, so that one single-family dwelling will be located on each parcel. Both new parcels would have dimensions of 50 by 82.5 feet and a total lot area of 4,125 square feet. That complies with the requirements that we have in our zoning and subdivision regulations. The new legal descriptions, so Parcel A will be the front half of Lot 14, Block 77, north of Center Street. Parcel B would be the rear half of Lot 14, Block 77, north of Center Street. There are required setbacks, but they will not impact the lot division, and staff has not been advised by any of the utilities about conflicts with the new lot line. There are two conditions. The first is that the applicant will record the resolution authorizing the simple lot division with the Brown County Recorder's Office. That's what makes it official. And number two, the applicant will provide a five-foot utility easement along the north property line of Parcel B. The reason for that is to provide electrical and natural gas to the residence that is now on the front of the lot. And this provides the easement across the property, the rear property, to the front property. That would conclude the staff report.
I have one question, Dave. How long has it been since we did one of these?
Boy, it's been a long time.
Yeah. I thought we were all finished with it, but yeah, I'm glad two building lots opened up.
Is there a house on the property now?
Two houses.
There are already two houses.
Yeah.
Same owners.
Same owners.
So this gives them the ability to...
Sell them off. Yeah.
Separately. Thank you.
Makes good sense.
I'll offer a resolution approving the conditions of the simple lot division of Lot 14, Block 77, north of Center Street. The street address is 516 11th North Street.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
And President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Item number 4.1, under new business, is the authorization for the purchase of a 40-month unlimited video/audio storage with Axon Enterprises. Commander Barsted?
Good afternoon. Counsel President Becker, members of the council. I'm Dean Barsted, commander of the Police Department. The Police Department is proposing that we upgrade our data storage with Axon. That is the company that we currently use to provide our tasers as well as manage our data that is collected via our squad cameras and our body worn cameras. We have nine squads outfitted with camera systems as well as an assigned body worn camera for each officer, and we, it's, this is a much upgraded service from when we had started using these types of systems 14 to 15 years ago, and we're just gathering data at a much greater rate than expected. So that is the reason for the request for the upgrade to the unlimited data storage. The price for the $25,152 for 40 months, the 40 months might seem like an odd term. What that actually does is we had initially gone on board with Axon in June of 2022. That was a five-year agreement, and so the 40 months will actually take us to the end of that five-year agreement with Axon. So that's why that 40-month number might seem a little strange.
You guys are currently capped at a certain amount of data storage, or how does that work?
We are, and we have, we currently are beyond that cap space, so our options really are to kind of go with a à la carte situation and purchase things chunk by chunk as we need that, and that gets to be a little bit cost prohibitive one. And also, it takes us time to get these contracts set, and we kind of fall behind and end up over our cap again. So we feel that with the unlimited storage, that was recommended by the City of New Ulm IT Department, that that would be the proper way for us to move forward and have this, the service in this space available through the end of the contract.
How long, you know, I know that was one of the problems when cameras, law enforcement cameras came out, was not so much the camera cost, it was the storage cost. And I know it used to be even way higher than this, because these cameras are on all the time, and you got to, if you have your cameras on, you got to store it. So how long do we store that for? What's the law requirement?
So that, that kind of varies. We have a data retention schedule, depending on the activity that our officers involved with. The, the storage, if we have, say, an accidental activation, whether it be the lights get turned on to assist with a funeral escort, an officer turns to catch up to a vehicle, they might exceed a particular speed limit, that also automatically will activate the cameras. And so we gain that data very, very frequently, sometimes several times a day. That data really doesn't have any specific value to us, and so we're able to have that data purged far more quicker than some of the calls for service that we engage in. If we're dealing with lengthy investigations, some of that data, if there's prosecution and those types of things, sometimes that data is classified in a way that it has to stay around for several years.
So like a typical DWI arrest, how long would they hang around, or how long would you be required to hang on to that data?
Generally, that would be seven years.
Yeah, that's how I was figuring that, and those can pile up.
Correct. And what we had done initially when we started using these onboard camera systems is we had, obviously nowhere advanced is what we have now. All of that data was stored on a VHS tape through a unit in the trunk of the vehicle, and we would remove those, and we would have to stockpile those. We moved there to greater technology. We got them onto small SIM cards. But now this, everything here now is being done online, stored on the cloud. This actually also makes our data redaction. When we are faced with data requests, we're able to go in and redact that data through that, through that Axon system as well.
My last question, did we do any bidding or other, did we look at any other companies?
We had looked at additional resources or providers before we decided to move with Axon. Currently, in order to stay within the contract with Axon for the remaining 40 months, we felt that the only way to go forward was to do the unlimited data storage through Axon as well.
And Axon's a very reliable company. I've dealt with them in the past, too. I'm going to go ahead and offer a motion to authorize the New Ulm Police Department to purchase the Axon Enterprises 40-month unlimited video/audio storage, amount of $25,152 using Public Safety Aid 290 fund, financial reserve account, and authorize the city manager or the police chief to sign the agreement on behalf of the City of New Ulm.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Nicole, how much do we have in that account? Approximately?
I don't remember exactly. They're still using the Public Safety Aid funds that they got last year. There was like, was it $300,000?
Okay. So there's plenty of money in there.
Yes. Yep. And then they can, when they get to the end of this contract, they can decide if they want that to be maintained through that 290 fund or in their regular budget.
One question for down the road in the future. I mean, this is the way we're going. Will the city be better off looking at, okay, a one-time hit, purchasing the proper equipment so we have our own?
Potentially.
That's kind of what I thought.
And I think that that's something, you know, that is certainly prudent to do as we near the end of our contract with Axon, to determine if there's some way to get similar or upgraded service at, at competitive rate.
In the rate of speed of technology, there'll probably be something way different in 40 months.
Forty months, it'll be different.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Item number 4.2, City Attorney Legal Service Rates Increase for 2025.
Council President, counselors, before you have the increase, the annual increase from Flaherty and Hood, the prosecution amount, which we have on retainer, that went up roughly 5% from about 8,800 to about 9,300, and then their hourly rates, for the most part, went up $10, between $5 to $10, mostly 10, so not a significant jump, but those are the increases that are being proposed.
I certainly support it. I know we had some concerns, and we lost having our legal person right there, right on our table to answer questions, but this system has worked out pretty well. And the fact that he represents numerous cities, sometimes we're able to get information, like what are other cities doing with this problem or that problem? So I think we, we get our money, money's worth out of Mr. Hood and his staff. So I'll, I'll offer another motion. I'll approve Flattery and Hood, City Attorney Legal Services hourly rate schedule for the calendar year 2025, and the monthly retainer for criminal prosecution services at $9,310.39 per month, effective January 1, 2025.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item 4.3 is ordinance number 2024-TBD, First Consideration, Amending Economic Development Authority Officers. I believe that's Mr. Scott.
Oh, he heard me say nice things about him.
To Council President, Mayor, Council members, this is a ordinance that our office prepared to, I think, just update the language for the positions in the EDA Board. So bringing it into date with what the EDA does and is required to do under Charter. It's, I would consider this more of a cleanup ordinance than anything substantive, but I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Where are you sitting right now?
Big cabin or something?
I'm sitting in my finished space above my garage.
Oh, okay. I thought you were up north on a lake.
Not quite, not quite that exact.
Sorry about that.
Now, this makes, again, good sense, just combining a position Secretary Treasurer. So I'll make a motion to conduct the first consideration of ordinance number 2024-TBD, amending Chapter 3. amending Chapter 3, Section 3.27, Subdivision 4 of the City Code, restructuring officers of the Economic Development Authority.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Just so that would combine the role of Secretary and Treasurer, is that what this is doing?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion does carry. Our last item of business today is item 5.1, Report of Claims Paid.
I'll offer a motion to approve $2,529,869.95 for those claims.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion does carry. With no additional business, this meeting is adjourned. Work session on the budget is to follow.